There's somebody else meandering?
Or maybe this dude's paying a bill, I don't know.
You never know. What'd you say? I need my clicker back. Yeah, so you witnessed the clicker incident. What'd you say? Oh, okay, Ben's ready. Awesome. Friends, what do you say we go ahead and get started? We appreciate you attending. This is now our third, third open house town hall devoted to our upcoming master plan. And as you know, the master plan will help guide growth, development, preservation of green space, priorities relating to transit, transportation more broadly for the next five years. So this is a very important document. It will be extremely beneficial to not only the Planning Commission, but also to City Council. So as I indicated, we had two previous town halls in the fall. This is the last formal opportunity for public engagement, although we would welcome, of course, public comments later this year at both the Planning Commission and City Council level, because both entities will review the document prior to its adoption. Mr. Harrington will be leading the discussion today. Of course, he's been our Community Development Director for just over a year now, correct? Yeah, he's doing a phenomenal job. We're very impressed to have him, or very pleased to have him as part of our team. There will be an opportunity for discussion and dialogue this evening, so I think it would be beneficial if we worked our way around the room and had everyone introduce themselves. If you want to give your name, maybe how long you've been in the Saline community, if you serve in any official capacity with the City of Saline or in the community more broadly, that would be beneficial. It would be good to know, excuse me. So let me kick it off, and I'll turn it over to Ben to introduce himself as well. I'm Brian Marl, Mayor of the City of Saline, have served in this capacity for the last eleven and a half years.
I'm Ben Harrington. I'm the Community Development Director. I've been the Community Development Director for the past year and not a Saline resident.
Joan? Well, we'll pass the mic. And yeah, can I trouble you to shut one of those doors? Thank you. Yep, it's on, Joan.
Okay. Joan Roth, living in Saline since 79 when we married, and very involved in both Sister City programs.
Jim Roth came to Saline in 67 and was on City Council for four years.
Frank Cece, I've lived in Saline for seven years, and I'm running for Saline City Council.
I'm Chuck Lesch. We moved here in 91, I believe it was, and I've been on the Parks Commission for the last seven or so years, and we actually just finished our master plan, so.
I'm Mary Detling. I am the Executive Director of Saline Main Street. I live just outside of the City of Saline, and I've been here for three years.
Bill Beard-Slay, been in Saline since 1990, current member of the Planning Commission and former member of ZBA and a few other things in the city.
Janet Dillon, I am a current City Council member. I've been on council in my 10th year. I've been a resident for 16 years.
Dean Gierbach, I've been on council for almost 18 and a half years, member of Planning Commission for the last 12, and a couple of years before that. I'm also a business owner downtown in one of the buildings, and been in this city since I was born, so 60 years.
My name is Elle Cole. I'm the City Treasurer. I've been in this position for about a year now. I assisted on the Planning Commission and DEI Committee.
Margaret Mandevos, I've lived here for 17 years. I'm a retired nurse, and I lead a Alzheimer's support group and go to the senior center and help out there quite a bit, so.
Bill Gibson, we've lived here for about four, five years now, and we own Fine Print Bookshop.
Lindsay Gibson, yep, I'm a business owner with...
Ben, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Ben Goodman. I'm the Digital Production Coordinator for both Saline Area Schools and Saline City Government. I've been in Saline for five years now.
Very good. Treasurer Cole, would you like to introduce yourself? Oh, she did, I'm sorry.
My name is Matt Zahn. I'm a property owner in downtown Saline.
My name's Bob Cameron. I'm on the Code Review Committee. I've been a resident for about 12 years.
I'm Jill Estrada. I've been a resident for about two years, but I'm hoping to become more involved with the Parks Commission and Environmental Commission.
Very good.
My name's Kyle Losty. Been a resident for about a year and a half, and yeah, just interested to hear about what's going on.
Appreciate you coming.
My name's Adrian Young. I've been in Saline for about seven years, and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission and on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Good evening, I'm Fred Lepton. I live just outside the city limits, and I'm representing the Saline Presbyterian Church, right around the corner.
I'm Doug Veenstra. I've been in the city for the last three years. Prior to that, I was in Lowdy Township, many years, on the Lowdy Township Planning Commission for 13, Chair for seven.
Zach, you want to say hello?
I live in Mabose Court, and I live in Saline. I started moving here in May, in May and June, in May, yep. And I know the mayor, he's my mayor since I live here, since I moved in.
Since you've been here in May, yes.
Yep.
Proud to serve as your mayor.
Yep.
Glad to have you as a constituent.
Yep.
Excellent. Chang Min Fan, I'm a local resident, and also came from China in 1984.
Michigan graduate. In Albert, Saline area. Just want to learn something from you, especially Mr. Ben, Mayor, and you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all being here.
Awesome. So there are posters throughout the room that demonstrate the public engagement we've done so far. There's survey results from our online survey that had about 400 responses, so please feel free to take a look at them. It has the meat of all the public engagement we've done so far, and I'll touch briefly and do an overview of it, but I won't be going into the specific data points, because you don't need to hear me read them off to you. So, I'm Ben Harrington. I'm the Community Development Director, as I said earlier, and we're here tonight to talk about the city's master plan. So we're getting underway here to viewing the posters. I'll do this brief presentation that shouldn't take more than 15 minutes. I'm trying to cut it under the 20-minute mark there, and then we'll end with feedback and more questions and conversation, for sure. So to go over what we'll be talking about, we're going to start with what is a master plan, because it's not necessarily self-evident or obvious about what it is. You wouldn't expect to maybe see a future land use map with a title of master plan, but in reality, that's kind of the crux of what we're talking about here. We're going to go over where the city is at in the update process, our public engagement results, just a very brief overview, goals, objectives, and implementations, which is going to be kind of a guide to how to read the draft when it's formally published in the next week or two, updated maps, which you'll see around the room, and then lastly, ending again with your public feedback and the questions. So what is a master plan? It's a guiding document focused on growth and development in Saline. It's specifically really looking at future land use. So besides the state saying you need to have a master plan, the only real requirement of it is this future land use map that's here to my right. And essentially, we are required by state law, the Supreme Court would also say it's a requirement to make our zoning code, which is our land use laws as they are today, kind of align with what we're saying we want land use laws to be in the future. So that is the one key legal document that's really featured in this. The rest of it is all kind of visionary and creative, and it guides us when we're making decisions, when adopting new ordinances, or setting our budget for types of projects we might want to see in our community. And that's exciting, because it allows people like myself, the city manager, the treasurer, the public officials that are in this room, and you all in the public, to really talk about larger issues that we're facing as a community. We're not looking at traffic impacts of one new 20-home subdivision. We're talking about traffic concerns and safety concerns we have all over the city. So it gives us an opportunity to kind of identify these abstract problems, and then really have a forum to discuss them, because it's not something we're always given, to talk about economic development in our community, or to talk about transportation issues in our community. So the plan should identify specific goals and objectives for the community, and then ideally, it really needs to be actionable, because what's the point of having a plan if we're not planning to implement it and not planning to do anything with it? So where we're at in the update process is that we decided we're going to update the plan last fall. Essentially, the city could have said the plan we had from 2017, which is on our website and publicly available, it's 87 pages, so I didn't print out copies for everybody, we could have just said, you know, that's great, we're good, we don't need to do anything. But the city identified four topics that we thought the 2017 plan didn't really adequately address, and that was housing, downtown, transportation, and then this kind of catch-all category of environment sustainability and resilience, and I'll be touching on all of these later as well. We held two engagement sessions last fall. We completed two supporting studies throughout this process, and we've allocated funding for another supporting study. We've crafted and administered an online survey for additional public input, and we have begun the draft of the update, draft of the update of the plan. So tonight is our final formal engagement effort to talk specifically about the master plan. But you'll have other opportunities to provide feedback as we go along. So on August 23rd, the Planning Commission will have a draft of the master plan on their agenda for their consideration, provided that it meets what they're looking for and that they like it and want it to move forward. They can recommend it to City Council, who would view it as soon as September 11th. And then provided that the City Council isn't a fan of it, there's a 60-day waiting period instituted by the state. So until November, the plan is still up for public comment, up for feedback from local municipalities, utilities, railroads, whoever it might be. They're all welcome to come and comment on our plan, and then at the November date, at the earliest, the City Council could say, we're ready to formally adopt this plan. And the reason I bring these three meetings up is because they're all open to the public, like all of our City Council and Planning Commission meetings, and there's public comment opportunities at both the beginning and end of each of these meetings. And when it's on the agenda, you'll have the opportunity to speak before the Planning Commission or the City Council considers the plan. So there are plenty of other opportunities for you to come out and speak in support or against aspects of the plan. And then I would just add that between now and the formal adoption, as has been true throughout this process, any resident, any staff member, any public official is welcome to email me or set up a meeting to talk about specific questions, concerns, or feedback that they might like to have. So let's hop into what we've gone so far out of the past six months of doing this. So we held two formal in-person engagement sessions, as I mentioned, and they had about 40 total attendees between the two meetings. We had numerous forms of informal engagement with meetings with high school classes, so over about two and a half days, I met with over 150 high school students at Saline Area High School to talk to them about local government, what we do specific to their class, and then the teachers were kind enough to afford me about 20 to 30 minutes at the end of each class to really talk about what do they want to see in our city. We've invested a lot of tax dollars in those students, so we want them to come back and use that wealth of knowledge that they've gotten from their education to improve our own economy and improve our own region. So it was important for us to really reach that demographic. I'm sure you can all tell, looking around, not a lot of people under the age of 20 in this room. So it was important to really reach this demographic of people who just don't come to public meetings. We had meetings with committees like Parks, like Environmental, the Youth Council, the DEI Committee, and I met with concerned residents in my office, both about the plan specifically and about things related to the plan, like housing and transportation concerns that they're having. And then, as I mentioned, we administered an online survey that had about 400 responses. So please take time sometime this evening to look at the posters around the room. I had our mayor has standing right next to copies of these printed out. I don't know if they're organized super well yet, but you can also take home legal-sized copies of all of these as well, if you wanted to take a closer look at any of them. And I won't be offended if you walk around the room while I'm talking, I'm very used to it, so. To go over the feedback we got, the downtown commentary was primarily that the city needs to create more engaging places downtown. We have a lot of parking, we have some businesses, but there's not really things to do as much as our residents would like to see. However, there is not really a clear consensus on what those places should be, and that's going to require a separate dedicated study and plan to find out what's economically feasible, how much it would cost, where it could go. I am a planner, so I've already anticipated this type of comment. We've already allocated the funding for this study. I already got a commitment from the state to give us $40,000 in support of this study as well. So we're on the right track on that one, so far at least. And there is also this desire to see more retail shopping, entertainment options, and restaurants in downtown Saline, which I'm sure none of you are a stranger to hearing. I'm definitely not. For housing, the primary concerns were housing for young families and housing for young adults. Interestingly enough, housing for seniors was not identified by the survey as much as people who come to the meetings, which makes some sense when we consider age demographics of people who come to public meetings versus respond to online surveys. And this was something we also looked at in the 2023 Saline Housing Study, which was a supporting study done in conjunction with this plan. And we found that we have a very aging population, and our access to housing for seniors hasn't really changed that much over the last 30 years. There was a clear support for adding more single-family homes, accessory dwelling units, and townhomes into our community, and there's definitely less support for multifamily or traditional apartment complexes, which I don't think is particularly surprising, but again, just it's good to have this on paper and have that feedback given to us. For transportation overview, about 50% of our residents who responded to our online survey, and this was true for our in-person engagement sessions too, they cited safety concerns as a reason they're not walking in Saline. So they're too close proximity to the road, there's not safe bike paths, so sidewalks and pathways that were off our main streets or improved sidewalks were definitely top priorities of people who've engaged with this process so far. And there was definitely discussion about need for better options for seniors and those with disabilities who can't get around as easily. And then lastly, for the environment sustainability and resilience overview, capital investments such as place structures and exercise equipment, as well as non-motorized transit, again, the sidewalks and pathways were identified as real top priorities for our parks. Interestingly, stormwater management was actually one of the highest prioritized things from our online survey of residents really wanting to see the city focus on stormwater management. Interestingly enough, our ordinances on stormwater management are about 30 years behind the times, so it's encouraging to see that we can really take that up as a key priority, even though it's not as attractive as a topic of building an exciting park downtown, essentially. And there was also general support across the board to promote energy sustainability, making it clear our regulations on solar panels, electric vehicle access chargers, things like that. So that was also encouraging to see that we're looking for energy efficiency options, and definitely something the city will be considering with its own assets. Obviously, we're not the utility, so you know, in terms of where the energy is sourced from that's left to DTE, but there are things the city can tangibly do to make a difference. So moving on to goals, objectives, and implementations, and really, this is how to read the draft when it comes out. So the plan is organized to begin with with eight overarching goals, and that's the handout that's at that front of the room. So if you don't have one, please go back by Treasurer Cole and grab this one-page handout as the 2017 goals on one side and the 2023 goals on the other. And this is an item that we started with with the Steering Committee, because they're overarching goals for our entire plan. They have significant weight when we're thinking about what we should be doing and how we should be doing it. So I won't bore you by going through all eight goals, as you can all read, but I'd just like to touch on really what was looked at with this. So there are two goals that have remained identical. It was Goals Two and Goals Eight, to be in conformance with the Parks Master Plan and to be conscientious of natural resources when we're doing new development and to grow at a moderate rate. I think those are all very realistic and tangible things that have rather remained unchanged over the last five years. But to look at Goal Number One, to promote the individuality of Saline, of the city in contrast to communities surrounding, and to enhance those characteristics which make Saline a superior place in which to raise a family, to work, and to play. The goal has been proposed to be changed to, which makes Saline an ideal place to raise a family and have a uniquely high quality of life. And one of the primary reasons that we did decide to change this goal is because as a town of 9,000, we simply cannot be everything. We can't be the biggest employer in the area, the biggest recreational offer in the area, and the best place to live in the area. We do have to have some trade-offs of a town of our size, and we really need to specialize. So with the Steering Committee, our planning consultant and I discussed was, well, let's focus on the residents. What we do well is having a high quality of life, of having a really great place to live, have a really great school district, so it's about building those capacities up. And I think if you look at the other goals and the word changes you've made, you'll notice that it's kind of taking it away from the jack-of-all-trades to, how do we make this an awesome place to live for our residents? Similarly, we had a goal for economic development, to encourage economic development activities which complement existing developments and which meet the employment and tax-based needs of the city. Well, the city has never once made really an economic development decision based off of tax base in the last 20 years, specifically because the state has totally changed how you can tax industrial property, which is neither here nor there and probably more detailed than you needed. But we changed the goal to encourage economic development activities that complement existing development, serve current and future residents of Saline, and are beneficial to the community as a whole. And I think this is a defined change from where we were five years ago, where we're talking about tax base and, you know, would an industrial supplier be a better use of our space than chicken and pickle, which is a chain of a chicken restaurant that also has pickleball? What do our residents actually want? Does foresee us serve the needs of our residents, or does it serve a tax-based need? And how do we consider new developments with our very limited amount of available land? And really, it should be focused on our residents, what's beneficial to you now, what will be beneficial to our residents in the future, and makes us a more attractive place to live. And then lastly, this is the only goal that was removed entirely. So in 2017, there was an overarching goal to promote the sound development, redevelopment, and improvements of each of the city's gateways, as depicted in this very old Gateways Corridor Plan. There's nothing wrong with that goal, and it's actually a sub-goal featured elsewhere in the plan. But what we talked about at the Steering Committee is, what were we really trying to get at that? What were we really trying to solve with that goal? So the goal was changed to support the creation of safe, attractive, and unique places which draw to people to and keep people in Saline. Moreover, the creation of green places that can be used as both informal and formal gathering places for the public, really switching away from maybe the total aesthetic appearance of the community and really into the functional part of it that we're looking for, which are great places for our residents, for our visitors, for tourists, whoever might be here, our workforce to come and enjoy their community. So moving away from the sole focus on aesthetics and moving more into this idea of function, what are we doing with our land? So moving on with plan organization, and I know it's a lot of information being thrown at you, there are 10 policy areas. After these eight overarching goals, there are then 10 policy areas that we focus on, and each of those policy areas have their own goals with their own objectives. So it's kind of goalception here, and I'll take you through an example. So here are the 10 policy areas. The only one that's been added is downtown district, excuse me, downtown district land use. Previously, it was kind of a hybrid between commercial and residential, where there is information about downtown, but obviously, it's a priority to our community that we have a really thriving and positive downtown. We host a lot of events, we have a mix of uses. It's not really fair to silo it into residential and commercial. So we created this new policy area, and I'll be excited to show you that when the draft is published in a couple of weeks. But just to take you through an example of how the plan is being organized, looking at residential land use, residential land use has three goals. One of those goals is to encourage housing developments that bring a new variety of housing products to Saline and provide attainable housing choices for Saline's existing and future residents. And that has the following four objectives, which we're not going to go through all of them, but just to start with the first one, to evaluate residential lots standards and to make necessary changes to allow for such developments to be permitted. That's a great idea, if you're familiar with residential lots and the technicalities of that, but really, from a staff perspective, how do we do that? How are we going to implement this idea? How are we going to implement this objective? And that's been the biggest change in this plan by far. We've created a spreadsheet for each and every single one of those objectives, and like I said, you have policy areas, goals, objectives. So for each of those objectives, I spent days behind a spreadsheet, hammering out what are the proposed steps for us to actually get there? What time should I be achieving that goal by, and who should be responsible for it? Is it the Community Development Department? Is it our engineer? Is it somebody else? So this is just a brief snapshot of it, but this is the implementation plan. This is how we're actually going to do it. We're assigning steps, we have a knowledge of who to do it to, and I think that's going to make a world of a difference, because if you take a look at the 2017 plan, which is 87 pages long, there are about two pages of text on how they're actually going to implement it, which I think herein lies the problem of why that 2017 plan wasn't activated to the best of its abilities. So currently, we have about 80 proposed objectives and about in totality, and 200 proposed action steps overall. The proposed steps are just simply meant to be jumping off points. Oftentimes, the hardest part in government is just starting the project and getting this team going. Staff will attempt to track the actual steps taken. So if I say on this, for example, that I'm going to conduct a housing study, well, if I had to hire a consultant to do it, in this case, we didn't, but if I did, I would add, you know, we have to bid it out. So that way, we have knowledge that we're gaining, you know, who did we talk to to do these projects? So when we have to do them in the future, we're keeping track of all this institutional knowledge. It's not stuck with me, the person, it now belongs to the city as a whole. And that's really where it ought to belong, in public service. And then lastly, to touch on the updated maps, there are updated city boundaries which reflect the annexation of Bela Terrace. So if you see the three maps, two over there, sub-areas existing in future land use, you'll notice that they all include Bela Terrace as the newest annex parcel that occurred within the last five years. We closed some discrepancies from 2017 maps, there were just some minor errors on some of them. We established the downtown district, which used to be called the Central Business District, again acknowledging that it's more than just business, there's residential uses, and there ought to be more public uses. We recognize the former hospital campus as a commercial user rather than a single-family residential, which has been recognized as for the last two decades. And we created three unique sub-areas along US 12, Michigan Avenue corridor. So to start with those sub-areas, this is a whole other section of the plan, and just very briefly, it contains some design standards, some goals that we hope to see in these very specific areas. Most of the residential ones have remained largely unchanged, because there's not been a lot of change in our residential areas in the last five years. So looking at this, you'll notice on these green, kind of gold textured marks, which I thought would show up the best, that these, Bela Terrace has been annexed, and that we've broken apart what used to be the West Michigan Ave sub-area and the industrial sub-area into three unique ones. So East Michigan Avenue, which has its own characteristics of strip malls, is very different than West Michigan Avenue, which has its own characteristics of these older developments, which is also very different than downtown. So it was important to us that we separated them out, and acknowledged that they're all different and need to have their own priorities, separate of being one and the same. The future land use map has definitely been edited pretty heavily in some areas, so again, we've added Bela Terrace. We closed some of these discrepancies that had the Central Business District way out here on East Michigan Avenue, and even a spot on West Michigan Avenue. business district way out here on East Michigan Avenue and even a spot on West Michigan Avenue. We changed the hospital campus, as I mentioned. We updated that some of this land that was meant to be industrial has now become residential. And then additionally, in this island pocket here on North Ann Arbor, we've now changed it from professional business to office service in light of recent annexation plans from a property owner in that area. However, that's still pending rezoning, and that will be its own thing in a couple of weeks here. So we're going to go into feedback and questions and just a few disclaimers, similar to many of the comments on there. We're not going to be able to accomplish anything, everything. I can't promise you that we're going to have a splash pad tomorrow, as much as I would like to, but we'll take note of every comment and look for these larger trends to find the specific priorities and areas of interest. Although I know water and infrastructure has continued to be a hot button issue in our community, this plan is kind of distinctly separate from that. I had this comment here because, if you remember, in October of last year, there was a lot of upset people over the cost of their water bills. So that comment has remained the same. But again, we're not necessarily here to settle issues with utilities, but more talk about land use as a whole. And then it's not a competition of ideas or a debate. We're all logically going to have different views of how our community should develop and what it should really look like. So just please be respectful and courteous to one another if someone says something that you disagree with. And then my business cards are up there. I'm a pretty accessible person. My cellphone is on there. If you have questions, if you want to set up a meeting, if you want to grab a coffee, I'm very available. So just let me know, and I'm happy to continue to follow up with any and all of you after the fact. So without further ado, here are the remaining opportunities to engage, and we can kind of begin the discussion.
Couple of things real quick. Either myself or Mayor Pro Tem Dylan will pass the mic to you if you'd like to comment or raise a question, because we are recording this evening's event for the sake of posterity. We want to make sure that everyone can hear your thoughts. Also in the back here, Mayor Pro Tem Dylan and City Treasurer Cole have put together packets which I believe correspond with both your slideshow presentation and the visuals that are presented this evening. So if anyone would like one, ladies, do we have packets currently available? Excellent. Just raise your hand, and we will be sure to get you one. It looks like we've got several people who want one. So just give us a second. We'll get them passed out.
I think I printed out 20 copies.
Yep, and I believe it's a five-page document. Is that correct, Mr. Harrington?
There are seven posters total.
Okay.
So, but yes, I don't know how many pages that roughly corresponds to being when you, it should be like...
There's a lot of data on there. Just give us a second. Chang Min?
Do you want to pass?
Yeah, hold on until we get, Chang Min, I want to make sure everyone gets a packet that wants one. I know, but before we entertain any questions or comments. Just need one more. If you change your mind tonight and would like a copy, and you're free to take these home with you, just raise your hand or come to the back table. We'd be delighted to provide one. Okay. Chang Min, I believe you had a question or comment?
Since yesterday? No. Nope, that's identical to what I gave you yesterday.
I've lost track, but the property on Michigan Avenue, West Michigan Avenue, that big, big green space?
Yep.
I've lost track of who owns it and what kind of restrictions there might be for that kind of use if the city ever owned it. I don't believe the city owns it, but I don't know that. And if there are restrictions for that use, what they might be, since Michigan Avenue is a state highway?
Absolutely. So it's currently owned by a company named Gunther Homes, which is based out of Ann Arbor. I have been in contact with Brian, who is their lead manager, as well as Natalie Gunther herself. I was told by them earlier this summer, when Eagle was doing some borings on their property, that we would have some sort of preliminary idea presented to us, hopefully by the end of the summer. So I called Brian yesterday after seeing that the houses immediately next door to it were for sale, just to give him a heads-up in case they were interested in expanding the site as a kind of a means to shove along. As for the state highway comment, I'm not aware of anything that M.DOT would specifically prohibit, except perhaps a curb cut. So that means to add driveway access off of US 12 might be a challenge for them, and M.DOT would probably encourage them to do it on Henry. As for restrictions otherwise, it's in our downtown zoning district, which is actually one of our most flexible zoning districts in terms of where it can be located on the property. But it's one of our highest restrictions in terms of what it actually has to look like. It has to meet the kind of the design standards of the rest of our downtown. We won't allow another Klingberg, which is that kind of ugly industrial building, sorry, Klingberg, on the corner here next to Speedway. So restrictive in the sense that it's, we're limiting what it can look like, not restrictive in how it has to be laid out on the lot. So it could be up to the sidewalk, according to our code. But if M.DOT raised a red flag, I'd have very little to do with that, because the state preempts us.
I know there's been talk about the dam along Michigan Ave. And who's working on that? I'm curious. I heard two different things that, since it is on a federal highway, that it's really up to the feds to make a decision about the dam. I myself would hate to see Mill Pond disappear, but I realize that there's, hearing about the floods that have happened with non-maintained dams, it's kind of scary to think about the people living downriver. So just wondering what's happening with that.
So the city has been allocated a grant for a dam removal study. It's just a study. It's just to say, this is what it would cost to remove it. This would be the environmental impacts of removing it. And this is the possibility of design if you did remove it. So that's the very, very preliminary step. It's before you can even really consider whether to remove it or not, you would even have, you would have to necessarily do that study. So the city is responsible for it at the end of the day. We have the ability to remove it if we'd like. I don't believe we're bound by M.DOT or by any sort of federal regulation. But it's not really necessarily a feature of this plan, because ultimately, when we're looking at land use, whether Mill Pond stays as large as it is, or if it is moved down to more of a river or a stream, that's a totally different question. That kind of goes well above and beyond our land use conversation.
And Marvin, I don't anticipate councilor staff would receive that analysis until the beginning months of this year, which means a decision or consensus on that issue wouldn't be developed by council until well into 2024.
Just so I can hear you two, and that way I don't have to take notes during the meeting. My handwriting is pretty atrocious, so I prefer to type things.
Okay, recently annexed the land for Bela Terrace. Are there any other agreements with Pittsfield Township regarding future annexation? I know there was some concern about the area near, on Michigan Avenue a while back, that the school owned and so on and so forth. So the reason I'm asking the question, if there's an existing agreement with Pittsfield Township, you probably want to consider that in the master plan?
Yeah, absolutely. So urban development areas and municipal service expansion are, so urban development areas are separate, but municipal service expansion, going back to this, is essentially that broad term that means annexation. So it is being considered. Pittsfield has services, which makes it unique as opposed to Lodi's, I'm sure you're familiar, York and Celine. There are a couple of properties that are actually pending annexation with Pittsfield. I bet you can't guess what they are. So one is the property that's an old house right in front of Lee Bear that was recently for sale. So if you're driving up Maple, that one is currently under a pending annexation agreement. And then actually, Jerry's Tire on East Michigan Avenue is an island within our city and also pending annexation. So those are our two properties with Pittsfield at the moment. Now with Celine Township, we have what's called an urban development area agreement, where we can annex, provided that there's development. There's still contingencies to that. I think Andalina Farms would be a good example of, even when there's an urban development agreement, it doesn't necessarily guarantee annexation, but it definitely expedites the process if and when it comes to that.
The point being is that it would probably be wise to include it in the master plan, at least as some kind of addendum, so that future developers understand what it is that you would like to see there.
Absolutely.
I know that the city has done at least two major parking studies over the last, let's call it, eight years, maybe decade. One of which led, most recently, to a proposal to expand parking around the banks on the north side of Michigan Avenue that fell through. Parking still seems to be an issue on the north side, yeah, on the north side of Michigan Avenue. Where is that in the priority as far as things moving forward?
Yeah, so I mentioned, we had two supporting studies done. So one was yet another parking study done by TIA, which is a traffic engineering firm. And then we did the 2023 Celine Housing Study was another supporting study. But for parking, we found, similar to the parking reports of past, that we are technically an overparked community. About 63% of our lots are totally utilized, or about 63% of parking spaces are used during peak hours in Celine. So that means we have about 37% of our parking spaces within the downtown area, including this lot here, that just don't go use, despite the fact that it's from here to there, I guarantee you is a shorter walk than from your car to Briarwood. And that's a very common trick planners use to kind of demonstrate that, is they overlay the mall to show you that you're walking far further than you would ever imagine to go to a mall. But, so yes, parking is being considered. But I do think that that downtown design study that's forthcoming, that we have those funds allocated for, is really going to be the best to answer how are we going to handle parking in our downtown. So, sorry, that's kind of a non-answer, but it's coming forward. It's definitely, we understand that it has to be considered, and we're pushing dollars to consider it, essentially.
Okay. As a completely separate topic, we have an abandoned rail line through town, starts at the Depot Museum, sort of, and continues westward through a long easement. Has it ever been considered to develop that into walking, biking that is so popular and such a draw to other communities?
Yeah, absolutely. I've already reached out to the Border to Border Trail. Actually, a gentleman at MML, who I'm in communication with, who heads their research division, had the exact same idea and even drew on the map where it would go to the depot. What I've heard from Border to Border and from Washington County is that we kind of have to get our own house in order. We have to get trails within our own community that would make it worthwhile to connect to us. I don't think that's necessarily fair, considering that Dexter and Chelsea had their trails built for them by the county. So it's, they didn't necessarily connect on their own. But I do understand the sentiment. We're just not geographically as well positioned as those two communities are for those efforts. But I think it's definitely something, as we continue to allocate dollars and build our own trails, we'll get there. And we recently got a grant for $800,000 to build a trail at Mill Pond Park. So I'm excited for that prospect as another means of, hey, we're doing this, now you should come here too. And it sounds like that's the trend of Border to Border, is to now look at north-south connectivity with the trail and to bring Celine and Mylan into the fold.
I think Pittsfield is a model of trails and sidewalks. They've just done an incredible job. And hopefully, we'll connect to it and attach to it. There's an idea to build a sidewalk along Willis Road that would touch town, all the way from Clap to town. You know, we just need to connect into that. And rail to trails is very popular.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm not going to steal Ben's thunder, but I've been on the Park Commission, and that's actually in our subtopic area of our master plan, connectivity within Celine is one of our major goals on the Park Commission. And several of us on the Park Commission have actually already reached out to the rail lines to see, because the existing Depot line that the depot is on, you know, the city pays a moderate rent to the railroad every year to use that. And it's essentially the same thing. We would just have to negotiate a lease going down. And we've been looking at that extensively, and we've had talks with the Brecken Village people, because that would be a circuit that the seniors could use in their facility too. So it's been well thought of right now.
Speaking of the railroad, I've noticed that there's a lot of cars parked along the railroad beyond town. And I'm wondering if they're storing chemicals there or just cars. Kind of worries me after that giant fire. And I don't know if everybody's seen them, but there's a lot of, I don't know what they call them, cars that hold liquid tankers. Thank you very much.
It's also kind of a niche joke, and it's kind of unfortunate, but getting in touch with the railroad is one of the hard, it's harder than Xfinity and Comcast, like you would not believe. They are very, very, very deliberately trying to not be bothered.
Listen, try taking a train. I've tried to go to, I have a friend in Kalamazoo twice, and the trains have been canceled both ways. And, you know, it's like, kind of like, I'm a little nervous about trying to take the train, you know? The other question I have for you is that when I drive around town, I see a lot of lawn getting mowed. And I know that there was just that big, you know, a lot of money given to the schools to make some changes in that big area by the senior citizen center and the middle school. Are there plans to like do more plantings? I noticed that behind the library, there's like a water garden. It's like all-natural plants. And I'm wondering if the city has a plan to like have more natural areas instead of just a bunch of lawn that needs to be mowed? Because, you know, looking at the way things are going, it'd be nice if we could, you know, have more trails in town, get rid of some of that grass, plant some more trees. That's just, I'm a gardener, so I'm kind of thinking that would be nice on the eyes and less gasoline and things like that.
Absolutely. Interestingly enough, that actually goes into that one example I did show, a residential lot standard. So one of the things that the city has historically done is allowed what's called cluster housing, which essentially allows you to offset the maximum amount of density you are supposed to use. So if you have a 100-acre site, well, you can only develop 40 acres of it, and then you have to leave the remaining 60 essentially as open space. And there's different ways that that kind of plays out with yards and everything else. But what often happens is you end up with HOAs kind of owning a bunch of empty space and land that's used for stormwater purposes, so we don't allow structures to be put into it that are wetlands or, you know, things that are otherwise forever off-limits now, because it's privately owned by a group of individuals. And it makes it really difficult to then add like pocket parks or new pathways and trails, because now we're dealing with the organization and the negotiation with these private HOAs that, you know, don't necessarily have the needed expertise to facilitate these types of agreements. So looking forward, looking at cluster housing, looking at how we go about the PUD ordinance, it's how do we limit kind of that dead space from occurring in our community to make it more of a naturalized area? And even like our stormwater management practices that we've been implementing with 207 Monroe, for example, will negate a lot of that yard-open space and instead create rain gardens or more natural areas and gardens to prevent just grass and empty space. Because I agree, it's not attractive, and it's, no one's just going to walk out in the field. I mean, even behind here in City Hall, I can't tell you if I've ever seen some child play on the grass area that we have right here. Not that all lawn is bad, but we have a substantial amount of lawn. We are surrounded by townships that have a lot of steds. Do we really need these large fields within our own city that are privately owned and unusable for the rest of the public?
Webster Township has made, I was talking with somebody that lives there, they've made a point to keep a lot of open space and have their, you know, their subdivisions be not so dense. So they seem to be thinking that having a lot of open space, I didn't realize that they were owned by HOAs. I just felt like the township, you know, was in control of keeping the space open rather than having that dense housing, like you see out on Maple that's being built. Those are pretty close together.
Right. And that's the thing with Bela Terrace, for example, they're close together because they're offsetting all the space around it. And Bela Terrace is a little unique due to the wetlands and the low-lying areas on that site. Technically, there's not much else we could do with it, legally speaking, as far as Eagle is concerned. But, yeah, that's definitely one technique for development. It's not a very efficient technique for development. And like I said, it fundamentally just wastes a lot of land that doesn't be, that's not able to be used. And then, to my point earlier, it's not maintained. Like, no one's going to ever do plantings in it, because it's privately owned, and HOA is probably not going to raise your rates, you know, 100, 200 bucks a month to then, you know, build a garden for you, essentially.
The, 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 my house next to Ann Arbor's court, there, people are still trying to cut grass. I know the lawn care has been in there. Sometimes they, they do a lot of cutting grass, and I see them. But I think they're, they're doing that, because the grass needs cut sometimes down there, where I live.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. If people want to mow their lawns, your grass can't be taller than seven inches. So you can get a courtesy notice if it gets taller than seven inches. Which is another, one of the hats that I wear with the city, so.
So I'll echo the mayor's appreciation of having you on full-time now, because I think in this year, you've actually driven a lot of programs forward, which is a great thing to see in Celine. You know, there's comment about Pittsfield, and obviously, all of the nice things that we want to have done in Celine require money. And has there ever been any thought at council with you to, because one of the things Pittsfield does very well is they have actually grant writers on... does very well is they have actually grant writers on staff, full-time grant writers. So I mean, if you have somebody out there scouring everywhere and I mean, you can't do it yourself because you've got plenty of other things to do, has there been thought of actually getting somebody, now if not full-time, at least part-time to manage grant writing for the city?
Let me say, let me say two things. And credit where credit's due, actually, it was then Mayor Pro Tem Girba who first offered that as an idea of adding that as a full-time staff position within our municipal portfolio, somebody who could, who had that skillset, that vocation and could write grants for us. And I think that's something we'll continue to look at and when we have the funds, I hope that that position can be established. Apart from that, Chuck, in the interim, we have had great success in this most recent year writing and more importantly, receiving grants. Ben touched on one, was it actually closer to 900,000, was it not?
It was 800.
Eight hundred flat from SEMCOG for the River Walk at Mill Pond. And that is, the 800,000 wouldn't accomplish or pay for the construction of that project. So we had to also leverage dollars from Washtenaw County, which was technically a grant, and then also the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. So there are three entities that had awarded us dollars to construct that project. I would also note, while not specifically a grant, the city was successful this year in part because of help from residents and business owners. We received a $5 million direct allocation from the state of Michigan for our wastewater treatment plant. And I'm assuming that check will be cut sometime after October 1st, which is when the state's fiscal year begins. And we're slated to receive right now anywhere between 1 and 2 million from the federal government to also offset the costs of our wastewater treatment rehabilitation. And on that note, we will be putting out an email blast and something on our website probably in the next month encouraging all of you and others to reach out to the members of this Senate and House Conference Committee to make sure that they do approve that between 1 and 2 million. Hopefully, it's closer to the 2 million side for our wastewater treatment plant.
And if I can just add briefly to, an advantage that Pittsfield has, they're innumerable because they don't own their own roads and roads are incredibly expensive. But an advantage that Pittsfield has is the new development that they've experienced. They can charge impact fees, which are things you charge developers to say, you know, this is the base fee of what you're doing, like it costs us this much to review and approve this site. But also it's going to cost us a lot of money to serve the residents that ultimately live here. So another specific proposed step on making sure that new development pays for itself is the consideration and adoption of real impact fees because that's something that Celine has not excelled at. And we've put money effectively on the table over the last 30 years because we haven't been charging enough to really offset the cost to the community for new development.
Thank you.
Ben, can you discuss a little bit more about how we would achieve some of this density in certain areas, including, you know, like the downtown and achieving the changes that we want to anticipate going forward to actually achieve more tax base and those type of things?
Absolutely. So density is a very difficult topic to discuss because it's very confusing. I did a whole town hall on density and it's on YouTube if you'd like to take a look. But essentially, the city has what are called residential lot standards as featured here that set the lot size limit. So in the city of Celine, our smallest lot by right is 7,800 square feet. It might not seem like a lot, but it's more than a quarter of an acre. That's a pretty substantial, not more than a quarter, more than a sixth of an acre. I mean, it's a pretty substantial portion of land. And people who are aging, younger folks who don't want to necessarily pay for that much land in Celine, the land in Celine is very expensive as many of you know, where it's important to build different types of housing stock and housing supply. It doesn't necessarily have to be high rises, but thinking about more dense homes with smaller yards essentially. And it's not requiring anyone in the community to give up the home that they have, but it's acknowledging that we have a lot of essentially, to use a metaphor here, we have a lot of Mercedes-Benz on the road and not enough Saturns and Pontiacs. And new homes don't necessarily generate affordability right away, which is another pressing concern in our community. But in 20 years from now, that smaller product is necessarily going to be less expensive than some of these large lot homes that we have in our community. And once again, it's not forcing anyone to change anything about the way they're living now. It's just saying when we have new development opportunities, maybe allowing people to live on smaller pieces of land and in smaller homes if that's their choice, if that's what they want to do.
I have a question. Celine does a great job with ADA requirements in terms of working with people that are in wheelchairs, vision impaired and hearing impairment. But we don't really talk about families with children with disabilities and adults and young adults with disabilities. At Mill Pond Park, we have that big wooden play structure. However, it's consistently in the summertime not being used because DPW has to shut it down to reseal it because of the carpenter bees and so forth. One of the big pushes I had at the other two meetings we had was getting handicap accessible equipment at our playgrounds at the parks, knocking down that wood structure and putting in a very good, high-quality plastic play structure similar to what they do in Ann Arbor to make it more accessible for our kids in our community with disabilities, with wheelchairs and so forth. How would you like to touch on that?
Yeah, I think that that goes definitely into the Parks Master Plan that they recently adopted. And I think that's just an overall concern of the city is how are we going to continue to invest in our parks capital? And then more importantly, how are we going to communicate it all to you that we are trying to invest in our parks capital? That, you know, this isn't something that's just been up in the air for a while, that we have these specific goals, not only so we can showcase to you that we're doing something, but so that you can all hold us accountable to say, hey, you told us there was going to be a new play structure in Mill Pond in 2025. The plan doesn't touch necessarily on the specifics of what a structure might look like or what it might serve as much as maybe the Parks Master Plan does. But again, it's really about building accountability and building transparency within the way that we plan going forward.
My follow-up to that is we talk about connecting sidewalks and making Celine more accessible for everybody. With school bus shortages and school bus driver shortages coming up, what's the approach of getting connecting sidewalks, especially in the new developments? I know Pulte Homes just turned down making a sidewalk, they said it wasn't possible. The walk zone is going to be extended for kids, especially, you know, in the areas of Celine Middle School, Woodland Meadows and Heritage. And a lot of kids that potentially could be living in Pulte Homes will have to walk to school. Now they're going to have to cross Maple, go down and only to cross back again. How are we going to touch to make that safe? Because people do not slow down on Maple Road when they come into town. And when people are leaving town to go up Maple towards Ann Arbor, they just gun it. Like the minute they pass or get close to Woodland, they just put their foot right flat down and just paddle the metal right up the road.
Right. So Bellatoris specifically, so on Maple Road, there's already a sidewalk that you can see in on the east side. And on the west side, there will not be a sidewalk. That goes back to decisions that were made well over, you know, five years ago, looking at eight, six, eight, nine, 10 years ago. And it's really unfortunate that it was plotted in the way that it was plotted and that essentially by the time they most recently approved it, legally speaking, the city can't retroactively say, no, what we told you eight years ago is no longer acceptable. If you give someone approval and vest their rights essentially to a development, it's very difficult to walk that back. So yes, it's unfortunate that we lost out on a sidewalk there, but there is a program called Safe Routes to School, which is a national program. And they have a Michigan office specifically that the city manager and I have already begun looking into. We have to set up a committee with the schools. It's a lot of heavy lifting and I don't know if the school staff necessarily has time for it, but it is a priority for us and it gives us a lot of access to new dollars to build better trails and to build better sidewalks. So it's a priority for us to access those dollars because without the school district support and help, we are totally out of contention for them. Similarly though, you can also use it for private schools. And with the upcoming Catholic school, St. Joseph's, St. John's?
St. Andrews.
St. Andrews, I'm sorry. I grew up next to St. Maria Grady, which is far more unique and easy to remember. So with St. Andrews coming online as well, we'll be able to pursue the same program with them. So we'll simultaneously be able to build sidewalk connectivity on the east side of our town as well as the west side of our town, which is unfortunately far too often kind of left out of these investments and these conversations.
So I hear potential conflict of projects coming up. The dam removal study, you know, could be a huge impact to the landscape of our parks and the city. I hope it doesn't happen. I hope we can find a way to save the dam. But at the same time, we're going to spend $800,000 to build a pathway along the lake that might not exist if the recommendation comes down to remove the dam. So how, how does that work? I mean, if we move forward with a $800,000 project that becomes a waste after we remove a dam because it costs $10,000 to replace the dam, that just seems like a master plan we'd want to kind of take ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's something that I've talked at length with our engineer precisely because of that reason. So the pathway, the birth of land that's there that's currently unpaved, it's just grassy and kind of soggy and wet, is rather wide. And because of how that falls off, we have to push it quite a bit away from the river already. And it's meant to be a starting point. We can build spurs out to benches to piers in the future, but this is a starting point to really get us the connectivity north-south through Mill Pond. So it's going to be positioned far enough away that dam or no dam, the pathway will remain unaffected. It's being built wide enough too to accommodate ADA accessibility, so unnecessarily, once again, needed to be a little bit further away from the river. So those two projects are being designed to not become in conjunction with one another. There's even, there are further little bit of spices that we have to replace the sewer line that runs under that same area too. So trying to coordinate the replacement of the sewer with the construction of the path is also its own little fun game of musical chairs.
If the lake disappeared, you would want to probably keep a park in there somewhere, but you'd also put in 200 homes if that lake disappeared, so.
The city owns the land. I don't think there's any intention of us to give up that park. We could also engineer the river then too. So part of the dam removal study is engineering what we want the body of water to look like. I am not an environmental engineer. My fiance is, so she could maybe probably explain that process better than I could. But that's essentially what would happen. The city would have a high degree of autonomy on shaping that stream to look like what we want it to look like. Now, without a dam, it's not going to be that large inherently, but I think it'll be an interesting sort of investigation with that removal study or the feasibility study.
I think the master plan should be looking ahead to, there's a lot of options that could happen with gaining that much land.
Absolutely.
Okay, since I've got the mic back, I'm going to ask my question. One of my biggest concerns, it sort of hits on a lot of the topics that we're talking about, is pedestrians and crosswalks. I will say the four corners is probably first to mind. I've always advocated and I was hoping that when we did the Michigan Avenue remake project, that the four corners would become an all-stop or a scramble or such. So where traffic would stop and pedestrians would move in all directions at the same time. Because I do feel as though that is a very dangerous intersection for pedestrians right now, even though we do have crosswalks there. You've got cars that are a little anxious because of the timing of lights and are not necessarily looking across the road or behind them for that person that will be crossing the road. So I'd like to look at that. The other one that I think is extremely dangerous that I'd like to see a hawk system or such is on the west side of town at the Austin and Michigan Avenue with the addition of Andalina Farms and future developments coming to the west side. There's going to be a lot more pedestrians. We are looking at creating sidewalks, but you have traffic coming in from the, from the west going nearly 70 miles an hour that are not looking for pedestrians crossing the street. And right now, that's the only access is if you're coming into town, you absolutely have to cross Michigan Avenue to get there. So I'd really like to see the city make that a priority in its planning as to how we are actually going to address those pedestrian needs.
Yeah, absolutely. So as you'll see when the draft is published next week, there are several objectives specifically related to pedestrian safety, not the least of which is the fact that 50% of our residents don't feel comfortable walking in Celine because of safety concerns. And that poster and many of those comments on that board, I will be sending directly to MDOT to kind of show them, you know, this is not me as your, as the, you know, given community advocate. No, this is the community that really genuinely has a problem with how we're managing these roads. Because MDOT is kind of wishy-washy, flip-floppy, you know, they'll say one thing one day and then feel differently another. I was told when I called them about this exact issue last summer, hey, you know, wait two years and we'll put you online for a study. Well, we're tired of waiting two years. So giving them this exact public feedback, showing them that, hey, this is a key priority in our own planning efforts, I think will hopefully speed the ball along and to get the Main Street organization involved as well. And potentially, we can, if we're still not getting the response that we feel we need, that's when we go back to doing what we've done with our state senators and with our federal congresspeople. Write to MDOT directly, write to our own congresspeople, Felicia Brabeck, for example, and say, MDOT is not giving us the service we need. This is not safe for our residents. So I think that's all upcoming. And I think that having this effort and having these as specific goals, having these as specific listed issues within our community all really help to improve our odds of getting MDOT to take action on US 12 and to make it a safer place for all of us in our city.
Thank you.
So this is, I mean, we've had history where I bring up a crazy idea and you are very nice to accommodate me, but for downtown right now, I know that getting someone to say something specific about what they want down there is like Lindsay getting me to just say what I want for dinner. It's impossible. But my question is, do you have plans to maybe get more retail or more, basically less services to come down and take spots downtown? I know we have a lot of empty spots right now and they're not being filled and that's not, you can't do anything about that, I understand. But are there plans to attract businesses that are less service-based and more retail or experience-based?
Right. I think that's definitely a hole in our community downtown that we don't have enough retail service. Mary from Main Street is here as well and I'm sure can echo that comment and echo that sentiment that we do need more. So one of the things we can do is reevaluate the uses we allow in our downtown. So back to the restrictions question earlier, we have restrictions on what that, what these properties in our downtown area can be used for, like we do for every property in the city. So there's potentially alterations to our zoning code we could make. And I'll just start with there. The alterations to the zoning code would probably be one of the best ways to maybe push out some more of the office users that we've had or at least push them to the second floor so they're not taking up these prime spots that would really potentially be good for service or retail, which is what our residents really are asking for and want.
I won't call it brainstorming, but is there any consideration for, we're talking a lot about sidewalks and whatnot and connecting this area to another area, pedestrian bridges?
Yeah, so there was once upon a time a pedestrian bridge proposed from Stone Cliff Park, which is on the west side of Mill Pond down into Mill Pond. So that was the one pedestrian bridge I am familiar with. But the more general ones used throughout the community, I would have to check with the Parks Department or DPW on because I'm not familiar of any plans, but it is a great idea.
I mean, I'm just, when we talk about the four corners that Janet was talking about, we live on the south side of town and I'm still waiting for a dedicated left-hand turn lane coming from the south because you can't see, you can't see the traffic from the north when they're in the left-hand turn lane and there's a little bit of a hill. But it, and there probably isn't any land to have a pedestrian bridge.
Right, that's a definite struggle.
You know, that goes across Michigan avenues somewhere in town.
Right. So the nearest proposed crosswalk would actually, we'll see how the funding shakes out because when you're building a, when you're building a path on a very low-lying area with wet stuff, it's very difficult to then allocate more funding for a crosswalk. But we're working on that with the Mill Pond project to then also have a secondary crosswalk with hawk signals. It's obviously a little bit further out from downtown, but that's the closest one we're working on is another point of connectivity. Now, once again, I know the dam being removed isn't popular, but that's also been a consideration. Well, if the dam was removed, we could potentially have a tunnel underneath US 12, which would be another safer pedestrian option. Again, further from downtown, but definitely safer for the kids and parents that use Mill Pond Park and Curtis Park regularly.
So I know there's been a lot of talk about Mill Pond and, you know, some of the improvements taking place there, but could you, and I understand that there's obviously a master plan for the, through the Parks Committee, but could you elaborate a little bit more on some of the work that's planned for the other parks in the, in the city?
So I actually don't have that information off the top of my head. I usually do have other information, so I apologize, but I can refer you to the Parks Master Plan. I'd be happy to send you an email with that document. And it has park-by-park specific things, similar to how we have subareas, design guidelines, improvements planned. So I can send you that document, which would contain that as well as the Parks Director's contact information, who would definitely be the better party to answer your questions on that. I apologize.
Is that sign on my door?
Yes, it is. It should be, right?
I'd also like to echo Councilmember Dylan's comments about crossing Michigan Ave., though I will say the four corners is where I feel safest crossing. It's Harris where I've almost been run over several times, so. Also, I noticed the, if I could, on the 2017 goals, non-motorized transportation had its own very detailed goal and I've noticed for this iteration, it's been appended to all traffic. It seems like a step backwards to me. And it seems less detailed. So I don't know if there's more coming in the plan about that. Okay.
Yeah, there's a, it has its, non-motorized is one of the things that I definitely attempted to expand on most for these proposed steps because it is such an important priority and it really is a safety concern going forward for our city. If we want to become, you know, have our unique downtown be a highly walkable area, we have to invest heavily in that area.
Okay, great.
Hello, I just wanted to speak briefly about some downtown concerns that were brought up, and that Main Street is working with the city to address, just briefly because this is the city master plan, so. But first of all, the four corners, there has been some research done prior to my appointment as the, the Director of Main Street to work on getting a scramble in downtown, and we're trying to reestablish connection with our, our contacts at MDOT, through Main Street anyway. So we may have to work more in tandem with that, but with all every, all the comments moving forward and all of that, we will work that out, so. And secondly, one, we just finished our strategic planning as well, and we have a plan to do more things to encourage economic development of the downtown, including bringing more retail, and that's something that we'll be working on more in the months to come as well. We, we understand that there is a lot of vacant space down there, and we want to see it vibrant and walkable and safe and interesting and a good place to visit as well, so that's something that we're working on as well.
Mary and I meet every Friday, by the way, so we are in communication.
We do.
I know that was not always the behavior between the city and Main Street, but we are on the same page, and so.
Yes, we, we have a good working relationship, so.
This was kind of mentioned a little bit, but I think specific to other, the surrounding areas, but with the master plan, in my mind, coming into the meeting tonight, I guess I was thinking it would include some of the surrounding township details, specifically York Township, like, like north of Willis but east of Old Creek. Like, there's a large amount of farmland there, which, it's beautiful farmland, and hopefully it maybe stays farmland, but however, as a city wanting to grow, I would think, looking at, I'm, I think in our senior leadership thing, Mayor Marl mentioned that that land's like on a hundred-year gridlock. But again, looking at a fast, at the master plan of, okay.
What's, does it have a plan for?
Have, yeah, have a plan for that of like essentially moving the downtown area to that area in 80 years or whatever's left of that.
Yeah, so the master plan by design is only for five years, so it, it doesn't look that far out, and to the Mayor Marl's point, that land is untouchable for a century.
Yeah, my, my cousins put the initial farm, which is 1995 Bemis Road, and then the farm to the south, which if you go back in Celine history was Ludwig Meyer's Farm, and then he had a parcel across the street on Willis Road as well. I'm not sure off the top of my head how many acres that is, but that was put into a PDR with the State of Michigan. PDR is an acronym for Purchase of Development Rights. I believe those documents were executed in 1999, and part of that agreement, it stipulates that the land must remain for an agri, must remain farmland for a hundred-year period subsequent to the execution of those documents. So from 1999, 100 years out, has to remain farmland. And I believe they did the same with their third farm that they acquired some years later, the old Berg Farm on Celine Mylan Road as well.
I tried to draw it on the screen here, so we all know what we're talking about. So it's this little red box here, I don't know if you can see my mouse on this right-handed map. So it's right here. So it's a rather substantial piece of land. The city's existing UDA, which is a map that will be in the formal draft and largely unchanged because our urban development agreements have not changed really with Celine Township. Yeah, that's perfect.
It goes to the city's board here.
Oh, well, I didn't know, is that?
This lot, which used to be part of Meyer Farm, is also a PDR.
All right, well, you get the idea. It's untouchable on the southeastern quadrant of the city, essentially, but we do have UDA agreement on the west side with Celine Township. I will have that in the draft, and I'll send that email to you, too, so that you can see what it is. Many, has remained largely unchanged, but acreage speaking, if we were to develop the whole UDA, that's about the size of the city over again. So there's a lot of potential annexation land to the west, provided that we're able to come to terms with developers, that developers don't have their own wastewater, wastewater package plants, or what they're called. Unfortunately, there's not much we can do about it, because again, the state essentially just lets them have it if they say they want it. So it's unfortunately a little bit challenging to prevent some of those folks from circumnavigating the annexation process, but it is something that we're, we're building better relationships, and we're hoping to work with more, more of the stead owners in the future to make sure that they're aware that we're interested and that they need to be, that they should be contacting attorneys when they're getting these phone calls, and, and that they're well-versed on what they should be prepared for if they choose to sell their land to developer for the purpose of development.
What's the status, there's a piece of land that I believe the city bought back on the east side of Monroe?
Yeah, so that actually, we just got a final PUD submitted, so it's, it's proposed to be 20 single-family homes, but they're all going to be about 3,800 square feet, sorry, 3,800 square-foot lots. So they're about, our average lot in the community is about 11,000 square feet, so there's going to be less, or about 25% the size of a typical lot. They're smaller, more narrow homes that will be stacked and have one to two car garages is what's proposed. I'd be happy to send you that link as well, so you can take a look at the site plan that they've proposed.
Do you have the diagram on that?
I think they'd probably start constructing early next year if they got approval from the city this year. So they have to go through a final PUD review, which can sometimes take a little bit of time if their engineering calculations for water management or vegetation aren't exactly aligned. So I would guess they'll have their approval hopefully by the end of the year, or have a resolution hopefully by the end of the year, and then if they were approved, they would be able to begin construction early next summer, or spring. And that will be on the planning agendas coming up in the next few months.
I have a question. I used to drive out Michigan Avenue to Ibsalani to work before I retired, and when I found out about the farm, what's it called, Austin Farms, it's on Austin Road, a big subdivision out there.
Andalina?
Andalina Farms. I thought, okay, they're building all these houses, that's two cars apiece coming out. Now, they're going to be driving, and then somebody said to me, well, Margaret, you know, it used to be Clinton and Mylan used to be like farming communities. Well, people are commuting on, on Michigan Avenue to get where they're going, and I'll tell you, if I didn't leave like before 2:30 to get to work by 3:00, it was like a parking lot driving up to Platt Road. I mean, it was just like, have the townships had any conversation about widening Michigan Avenue? Because, I mean, all these developments that are happening along Michigan here in town, and everybody's driving out, I avoid Michigan now like the plague. I mean, it's just so congested. I drive out textile now, and, if I can. And, I mean, does anybody else feel that way, that what are we doing? I mean, it's like, are you guys like talking about widening?
Again, unfortunately, because US-12 belongs to MDOT, it's totally out of our control. We can't widen if we wanted to, so it's really just a matter of.
My mic is off. It's really just a matter of us, like I said, kind of communicating our community concerns to MDOT in a more robust way than we ever have before, because, like I said, we are completely powerless when it comes to what MDOT chooses to do.
Well, to that point, it was interesting, I just read an article about Sharon Township blocked that big 400-acre gravel mine, I think it was Sharon Township, out Pleasant Lake Road, and I don't know, I did call the lady that was organizing against that to talk to her, because my daughter and I had driven out that road, and we almost got run off the road by a couple of drav, you know, gravel, double gravel trucks hauling ass down that little narrow country road. So I can understand, but then it, the whole issue comes up of people having control over their, you know, there was this whole issue that the legislature in Lansing could make the decision about that gravel mine for Sharon Township, whether they liked it or not. So, I mean, maybe there would be some approach that the surrounding townships could talk together and approach MDOT. Maybe that would have more punch, because it's just getting ridiculous. I mean, my daughter will say, well, that's progress, when I see these giant subdivisions going up. Oh, my God, you know, is it like more traffic? I mean, I understand, I'm not against, you know, development, but then the bigger picture is that it's just going to be a cluster bleep going up Michigan, it's going to get worse.
If you would like, two fun facts. So one is, I used to live on, I used to live in Pittsfield Township, kind of right off 94, and I drove US-12 every single day to work, which is a nightmare, I totally understand. My insurance, since I've now moved to Ann Arbor and take Ann Arbor Celine Road every day, has gone down $20 a month, so. I guess I feel like that's the proof in the pudding in terms of US-12 is not necessarily the safest road. Additionally, I had a second point here. Additionally, yes, okay, looking at traffic statistics, US-12 actually, in our community, right by the gas station where the proposed, or where the hotel will be, has more traffic count per volume, about 19,000 trips on average per day than here on street in downtown Ann Arbor. So it, it's a little bit misleading because there's other east-west routes through Ann Arbor, but still, here on street has less traffic than US-12 and Celine. That's, that's kind of bewildering to think about, but I think that, that definitely shows us all that these are not our assumptions or our conjecture that US-12 is, is busy, it's a very busy road, like we have statistics to show that. And I think, once again, leveraging the knowledge that MDOT provides us in a better way, in a more robust way, can help us hopefully activate MDOT to, to be more attentive to our community and resolve some of the issues that we're experiencing.
So that would be calling the state representative, would that be, I mean, I, I feel like I can't do, I can't do anything about what's happening in Washington, so that's why I come to these meetings, because I really feel like our community is wonderful, and I want to keep it that way, and if I can have any kind of, you know, influence or help to do that, so is there a way that we could sort of, who do we call about, you know, take a look at Michigan Avenue, that, you know?
Yeah, well, like I said, I think this, this meeting right here, the survey, is all a great first step, because like I said, it's now pen on paper. We have residents, tons of residents, you know, that are complaining about the safety issues that we have. These comments, too, will be added to a similar poster to that one by the door, which, again, I think will go back to MDOT and will say, it's not me, it's not Mary from Main Street, it's all of our residents have issues and safety concerns with how US-12 is being run. So that's our first step, but, you know, if I get stonewalled again, then we're going to go to the nuclear option, which is to call their parents, which are the state legislator, and have them do something. So that, that would be the next option, is really kind of hitting them through the press, because as an advocate, that's my next best choice, is if I can't get the action for them that I need, I have to go to somebody else.
Well, it just seems like, too, that there could be some power in the community, kind of like people like you in every little, you know, township around here, if you guys put your heads together and say, look, this is where you do this, you know, and, I don't know.
Absolutely.
Just to kind of tag on that.
We have the community, citizens, or quality community or whatever, that is kind of
an organization that back 20 years ago was one of the things that helped to address some of these issues for future planning and such. Ben, can something like legislative cooperation or that aspect be included as part of the master plan as a type of category or something that we could consider?
Intergovernmental cooperation is the last point on there, so it is very much part of it.
You nailed it. I thought it was on there. I thought, but I couldn't.
Right. I, I think another item that we could leverage, too, potentially with the mayor's help here is the Washtenaw Area Transportation Study. If, once again, if, if MDOT is unresponsive to our, our renewed call with more resident, you know, with more feedback, with more planning involved, I, I think that then potentially going to Watts as a, as a leverage tool against MDOT, going to the state legislator as a leverage tool against MDOT. Those are the ways that we'll seek progress, because, you know, unfortunately, MDOT's also building roads in Ironwood, Michigan, which is closer to where I used to live than it is to here, which I used to live in the Twin Cities. So, you know, they're, they're spread thin all over the state to build roads that serve five people, and unfortunately, sometimes that means they're neglecting the roads that serve 20,000 a day.
Looking at your policy areas, I was just curious, where does the utilities that the people will need, the residents would need, in the infrastructure? I think the master plan should address and look at that so the city can serve their residents.
Yeah, so that, that falls under a couple of places. Transportation, it's primarily the three right above intergovernmental cooperation, so it's transportation, municipal service expansion, environment sustainability and resilience. One of the things that we've gotten from open-ended comments that our planning consultant is still helping me code, is this disbelief that new development means more taxi, or more, more issues with our wastewater treatment plant. It's actually the reverse, because a project that costs $86 million really has a large economies of scale to it. If we can serve more people with our plant, necessarily our rates for residents are going to be able to be lower, because now we have more people absorbing that cost. So new development actually will be aid in the construction of these new utilities and help our community. I think there's a disbelief that it will actually hurt us or make us more taxed. We have to build the new plant anyways.
I, I address DTE as being our micro and gas. We have a lot of outages. I'll, I'll have underground instead of overhead wires and that type of stuff. There's where I'm going with that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, sir.
And I don't see that up here at all, and that's a very important part of ours.
Well, similar to the railroads and to the state, again, the, the federal government gives us very, as a local municipality, gives us very little say over what utilities choose to do. So DTE has had all sorts of issues and problems with the state this year. I would say for good cause. My powers been out for, you know, over a week in total time this year between the two places I've lived. But it's a really, it's a real struggle for local municipalities to leverage against DTE precisely because the federal government and the state government have enacted laws that say, we can't touch them.
Just to add to the MDOT point, they just released their five-year transportation plan. Draft is open for comment period until September 8th. There are contacts in there. I can send it to Ben, he can add it to his list, too, but it shows the projects that are pretty much up for being designed and built in the next five years, so it's a good place to look and a good place to comment.
You said MDOT?
MDOT's five-year plan, 24 to 28.
If you send it to Ben, we'll get it.
Absolutely.
On our website and social media, make sure that we encourage our residents, business owners, community stakeholders to comment.
Absolutely. It is 8:20, so we have about 10 more minutes to go. Any other?
I'm glad we have the page right there. I know, I know. Well, I'm glad we have the policy on there. If you look at it, this very first one.
Historic?
Historic and visual character, I just want to talk about that. Celine is so unique. Historical point, and also we have visual point. And this is the thing which is the, the order of people passing by, you can easily see through this town, you have to go through this. Secondly is that we have the history, the founding father of this town, Riston, the name is right there. So because of that, I want to know, I want to ask a question. Master plan, why you call that?
That's just what the state calls it in the Planning Enabling Act.
Why, can we say this is strategic master plan or tactical, tactic master plan? You, because you mentioned about five years. My question is, is this five years for the next five years? Or is it just, just for this five years, and then later we can consume?
So the city has, I know this makes everything more confusing, but the city has a variety of different plans. So the parks have a master plan, the city planning division, which is me, essentially has our own master plan, and then the city is free on their own volition to adopt a strategic plan, which is something that the city manager and the city council are currently working on in conjunction with one another. So that, that's, that has far more to do with like city operations, where are we going as an organization, and then policies and other things we need to update. So this is, this is primarily looking at land use, parks primarily looks at parks, and the strategic plan primarily looks at the city as an organization, because I, I know it's sometimes lost, but the city is an organization. They have full-time staff, we have part-time staff, we have HR issues, just like every other company in the world. So we operate in many respects similar to other private sector operations, so there are, there's financial concerns, there's budgeting concerns, so that's, that's where the strategic plan is traditionally called, and that's what that's really focused on.
Alterate again, I hope there's somebody else I'll probably get a question.
But just to finish off there, semantically, it's, it's just the name of the plan. It's what the state has historically called it, so we just adopted the same name.
So I wanted to echo, gentlemen, just right now, your name, and Bill, and also Kyle, and if you can see that they are young couple and move to Celine area.
And this is the thing, what I want to.
You focus residents basically first, which generation you can focus on because of this is the dynamic town. And that is important for us to decide. What can the city, Celine, will be not just the next five years, next five times, two times, three years. So they are one, going to send their children in the school, but the school is reducing, and population also reducing. I do think that we. Is the young mayor and team, and we have great future, and this is the job point. No more than I do about this town, how is developed? I think that is the master plan, we call that, is so important, we don't have to, as I said the other day, do some research. How many young couples going to move in, are already moving, are we truly going to have? And that is one thing before.
As the other thing about the visual character. So just, you know, I'm.
Yeah, if anyone is interested in those types of statistics, SEMCOG, Southeast Michigan Councils of Government, which the city is. Councils of Government, which the city is actively involved in, that's the entity, as a matter of fact, that has awarded us the $800,000 grant for the Mill Pond River Walk. That entity maintains an excellent web presence. And they advocate and provide data on behalf of municipalities in Wayne, Washtenaw, Oakland, McComb, Livingston, Monroe, and St. Clair counties. If you go to their website, SEMCOG.org, you can access all sorts of data, specifically in terms of projection on how this area is going to grow, how it's going to age, and how that entire region will develop over the next 50 years.
If I can just jump on that. So we know some of our aging characteristics. So the city has gone from about 5% of our population being over the age of 60 in the year 2000 to about 25% today. So we have substantially older population now than we did 20 years ago. There's not much we can do about that in the sense that people are going to live here that want to live here. And many people are really deeply tied to the community so they don't want to move away right away. You know, they want to retire here, they want to live the rest of their lives here. So we can't force people out and we would never want to force people out of our community. As for young families, I think, like I said, it's about building housing that's attainable for them and that's a product that they can afford. This is a topic that I've had with, a conversation I've had with the superintendent. This is something we'll be talking about at the CQC meeting next week, is what types of strategy do we need to do to market Celine more to young families as a prime option of a place to live, of a place to raise a family, to send your kids to world-class schools, and to have a bunch of different retail dining and shopping service options at your feet here too, so you don't have to constantly drive to Ann Arbor.
I have a question. The other night at the council meeting, we had a gentleman that came in and spoke. Everybody talks about restaurant selection and variety of food in Celine, and I think we lack in a lot of areas in that. Like we have four Mexican restaurants, not three on Michigan Avenue. We got to remember Mia Zarape is essentially a part of this community too. So you have Mia Zarape, you have the new one over by the movie theater, you have Paradise on the western end of town, and then you have Cancun downtown, essentially. There's a wide variety of food that's out there in Ann Arbor area, Pittsfield Township, so forth. When can we, how can we get more variety of food in here, especially in the downtown area? Somebody brought up Dexter. You know, Dexter's downtown area is thriving at 2, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and this is weekdays. This is like a Wednesday. If you really want to bring more businesses and stuff down there, we need more variety. And I echo the support of the bookstore owner, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name. Yeah, I echo the support for him too. Yeah, we need a variety. We need a variety of things for young families as well as community members to connect with. And that's going to echo into my next comment, and that's about, this is not a tack on you at Celine Main Street at all, having a downtown area where we can hold events, to where we don't have to close roads, to where people have accessibility to get to these events, to connect and so forth. And, you know, you have a lot of property that's coming open. Are we looking at buying those properties to put in a downtown area where we can have events safely and not have to wait on the fire marshal, wait on the police chief to say, yes, we can close that street, or no, we can't close that street? Because it impacts everybody, impacts them at Main Street. They have to wait to find out whether or not they can close a road. Oh, yeah, you can close it. Nope, now you can't. 24 hours later, you can't close it. And, you know, there's a lot of construction projects going on. So are we going to look at building a downtown area where we can connect and do these events safely and without overbearing our police and our DPW?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's what that study really is for, is what can we do with our own land? Because the city owns four, six, it's six actually, technically parking lots within the downtown area. That is land that we're owning. And whether or not we believe we're making a choice with it, we're making a choice with how to use that land by making it only for parking. Coincidentally enough, when we have events, we say, well, that no longer needs to be for parking, it can be for events. So it's looking at, maybe is there a better way to use that land? Are there other ways that we can park in our community, either on the street or shared parking agreements with the churches that happen to be downtown, that really only use their spaces a couple days a week, to bolster our opportunities for people? So there are trade-offs that are going to have to be made eventually because we have a finite amount of land. In economics, it's scarcity. So we're faced with this issue of land scarcity. How do we best use our land available? And that's, I think that kind of ties up nicely this whole thing. That's kind of what the master plan's all about. How do we use our land in the best possible way to serve the needs of our residents and our community? And I think that's the key pivot here, is that we're turning this attention to how do we use our land to serve our residents? How do we use our land to serve our community? Rather than how do we generally use our land to accommodate everyone? Because simply, we cannot accommodate businesses, industrial, and also have really neat places to live because we are capped with the amount of space that we have in our community. So that would be the answer. I forgot the first question specifically.
About diversity.
About diversity, yeah. That's, that is a great question. It's kind of the million-dollar question. Main Street has done a lot of work to increase their footprint in terms of being diverse, offering our website, offering their website in many different languages to attract potentially more ethnic or different options for downtown dining. But once again, it's kind of getting the right person, finding the open space and connecting them. I think that we have a lease sign for downtown space where Smokehouse 52 used to be. There's not many more details at this point, but it's going to be another restaurant. And I think that's an exciting thing for our community. And that came through matchmaking. We had an open space. I had a gentleman who I knew was interested in opening a restaurant who lost out to Jalisco, which opened, and we matched them together. And there's not rocket science behind it, but it's just staying persistent. It's staying open, it's keeping your ear to the ground. So I can't guarantee you anything, but I can guarantee that I will advocate for you. And that's about it, so.
I got a question. Henny Field is, Henny Field is probably the only green space that I can think of. Other than the Dunker property, that in my opinion is not fully utilized. And you take a look at Henny Field, it's, there is a connectivity to the downtown, the four corners. It's only a block off the four corners. It's also connected to the depot trail, so you actually have a non-motorized pathway. It's more surrounded by neighborhoods. How do we, I know it's owned by the school and that seems to be the issue, but how do we leverage it as a community? Because that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so this is something I've shared with the mayor before, but a Celine Community Foundation or a Celine Parks Foundation would go a long way, I think, in terms of raising the necessary capital and make specific improvements that we want to see tomorrow. So Ann Arbor has their own community foundation that kind of sort of serves our area, not really. But it would definitely be a step in the right direction. The schools have their own. That said, specifically about Henny Field, I've recently talked to Superintendent Lott. I had them send me the deed and the title paperwork so we can see what restrictions actually exist. Because I heard very conflicting things from the school district since I've started, which I think is just because not everyone necessarily has that information at their fingertips. But it looks promising. It looks like we could absolutely build permanent structures and fully utilize that space more so if we wanted to. Not permanent structures in terms of housing or retail, but park structures, splash pads, things like that. So I think we've made some progress with Superintendent Lott at reopening that. But it's going to take a lot of community action and a lot of city action to really raise the necessary funds to build something pretty exciting on that property. And I think the schools have become warmer and warmer to that idea, at least over the past few months. So I'm excited to see where that relationship goes. And we'll definitely disseminate information on what we can do with that lot when we know a little bit more. Yeah, absolutely. So if you have any other questions or comments or feedback, as I mentioned earlier, I try to make myself incredibly accessible. My business card is on that back table. It has my cell phone number. I have two cell phones, so please don't worry if you text me at like 10:00 PM. I'm not going to look at it until the next day anyways, so don't worry about bothering me. So if I can help you with anything, if you have more questions or feedback, I'd be happy to send you all the email of the draft too, if you just shoot me your contact information. And yeah, that pretty much wraps it up. I really thank you all so much for coming out. And you all are people that make this community such an exciting and special place to be. So thank you.
Thank you.
And you are welcome to stay and look at the big drawings on the walls if you would like to. There are also snacks on both sides of the rooms and drinks, so we're not.
Please drink.
We will not be pushing you out the door, so you're welcome to stay. We're just done with the presentation part.